Good evening. This is the city council meeting of February 3rd, 2022.
I can't hear you.
He froze.
I can't hear you.
Anybody here from Councilor Niski?
He's frozen.
He's frozen.
Great lights, but no audio.
Yeah.
He got stage fright.
My goodness.
His wife works for Whip City Fiber, for crying out loud. Well, there you go. Just like.
Guess we better elect a president pro temp.
Motion to elect Councilor John Beltrandi.
Billy will be right back.
Temporary president.
Second.
Okay, anybody else?
Last minute.
Roll call.
Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Here he comes.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Yes.
Figgy?
Period.
He's back.
Flaherty?
I would ask that we stop the vote.
Cancel the motion.
Yeah.
Motion to cancel the motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Absolutely.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty? You're mute.
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Here.
Bean?
Yes.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America. In the great public. For which it stands.
Stands.
One nation. Under God.
Reading of the record, Counselor Belltrandy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to accept the reading of the record of the meetings of January 6, 2022. Inaugural meeting, January 6, 2022. Regular meeting, January 12, 2022. Special meeting, as submitted.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
I think he's reading from the wrong agenda.
Yeah, I think it's last time.
It's just January 20th.
Oh geez. Okay. All right, hand it off to somebody else so I can get the right one.
Who's got that in front of them? Counselor Bean?
Thank you. Motion to accept the minutes, the reading of the record, I'm sorry, reading of the record of meeting of January 20th, 2022.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yep.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up is public participation, and I'm gonna ask Pete if I can, if you can again tell me how to get the people, the view of the residents who are. Okay, thank you.
I got a message saying the public may not hear the audio.
From who?
No on the stream, I guess. No audio or video. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak in public participation? Again, this will be 15 minutes, three person, or three minutes per person, max. Please raise your hand in Zoom. And I am seeing none. Is that what you're seeing also, Pete? Just to make sure I'm doing this right. Okay, is there a motion then to close public participation?
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Communications from the mayor, item number one, Counselor Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion for immediate consideration of item one.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. We were gonna break these into four, so if we can do it in four, four separate. I mean, the motion's fine, but we'll have, have four votes, if we can.
First motion is just for immediate consideration, right?
I'm sorry, yes. Vote for immediate consideration. Thank you, Counselor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, so this is to allow immediate consideration. Roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Matthews Kane.
And before I make the motion, may I, I missed the window for discussion on the last one. May I make a brief comment more for the public than for us? May I?
Certainly. Yes, please.
Okay, the, everything we're gonna be voting on was discussed in executive session an hour ago. We received all the information we need to make our decision in executive session, and this item is in compliance with the civil service order. The reason, usually we do immediate consideration because of timeliness issues. We're doing this under immediate consideration because if we send it to finance committee, we can't discuss it there because it can only be discussed in executive session. And that was more for the public than for us. And now I'd like to make a motion to appropriate $74,958.22 from free cash to law judgment account to comply with an order of a state agency.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
No.
Bean?
No.
What was the count on that, Madam City Clerk?
Three noes.
Nine, nine, four, nine, four, I think.
Thank you.
Ten, three.
Nine, three, ten, three.
Ten, three.
So, so can we, just for the public, can we say that that motion passes?
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Counselor Matthews Kane.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to appropriate $174,902.53 from ambulance undesignated account to law judgment account to comply with an order of a state agency.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
No.
Bean?
No.
Motion passes. Counselor Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make an emotion to appropriate $5,000 free cash account to personnel purchase of services account to reimburse the personnel department on the expenditure of funds to comply with an order of a state agency.
Second.
Is he frozen again?
I think we lost him again.
He looks so lifelike.
Didn't we complete that vote to get you pro temp?
Yes. You wanna give him a minute?
7:30, cool.
All right, we have a motion in a second on that item for 5,000. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes, this is the one that I had heard right before I froze.
Yes, the 5,000.
5,000, then that's a yes.
We're on item 11 now, Bill.
Welcome back from the Twilight Zone.
Thanks. So.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
No.
What's your count?
Passes. Counselor Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to appropriate $150,000 from ambulance undesignated account to ambulance purchase of services account for the payment of ongoing legal fees.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
No.
Bean?
No.
Motion passes. Item number two, Counselor Mello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am so very pleased to move for the immediate consideration of a grant of nine air quality monitors from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to the Community Development Department.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion, Counselor Mello.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. You may recall an email from Mass D E P back near the end of July informing us of a grant opportunity for PM 2.5 air monitoring. Those are particles that are 2.5 microns or smaller in diameter that float around in the air. And they can go more deeply into lungs and have been linked to a variety of health issues. The application deadline was October 1st. Mr. Miller applied for nine to be placed in various locations throughout the most densely populated and traveled areas of the cities, including three Northside locations, the airport, the intermediate school, and Colonial Pine Acres, and downtown at the transit center, the tech academy, the police, fire, and DPW headquarters, and senior center. The monitors are connected to the internet, and they post real-time data for the public, and a similar sensor is online up at Westfield State outside of Wilson Hall, and I sent you all an email so that you can see what it looks like. Right there, I believe Pete showing you the map, the PDF, of where those sensors are planned to be placed. And you may also recall that several Northside residents have been advocating for air quality monitoring for a very long time now. So our deepest gratitude is extended to Peter Miller, Jean Carpenter, Barbara Roke, Gail Bean, and of course, Counselor Mary Ann Pavinski for all of their hard work, and to Mayor Tomason and McCabe for their support, and to my fellow counselors, hopefully for yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question.
Counselor Bean and Figgy.
As far as locations, was there kind of a rule of thumb or some best practices that's why, that we've had them where they're located now?
Most of them are within or on the edges of environmental justice communities where our highest environmental impacts are found. We have a highest population density there. And also, these are in relatively easily accessed locations for electricity and internet and municipal availability of land and access.
Counsel, you said, Counselor Bean?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Figgy.
I might also add, this is time sensitive, as we have a certain amount of time to reply to accept this grant.
And there is no local match.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Morganelli, Matthew, and then Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. While I appreciate the, you know, the population density, environmental justice, community, locations. It would make sense to put these also where there is, where there is a lot of industry, where there is a lot of truck traffic. That's really where you wanna capture the, the air quality as well. So having, you know, it's not just about where people live, it's where the trucks travel, where the manufacturing is, what's, you know, that's really important. So I'm not, I, I'm not so sure that those are all the best locations. How did, can you explain a little bit more about that, Counselor Mello or somebody else who, thank you, Mr. President?
Thank you. Counselor Mello, do you care to address that if you have the answer?
Sure. Well, I think you would find that there is a decent amount of air pollution where jet planes take off. So having a sensor up at the airport is, you know, a very good idea, okay? And the intermediate school is also right next to Southampton Road School, which has a playground that's right up against Southampton Road. So that area was a no-brainer, right? Because it's right up against that heavily truck-traveled route where kids actually are for extended periods of time. And Colonial Pine Acres is also where children and impacted communities spend a lot of time, and it's right next to the turnpike. So that and the idea that it needed to spread across wards and across affected communities is why. But these are not very expensive, so if you wanna put out more, I would totally support that, too.
Thank you. Counselor Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, congratulations. Thanks for all your hard work on this. I'm obviously gonna be supporting it. I, my only curiosity when I read what was on council share is who's gonna be in charge of like the maintenance and the notifications, like we have to type in at some point that they're all set up, like who will be spearheading that?
Counselor Mello, if you have that answer, I don't know if you do or not.
Peter Miller will be working with tech and everyone else required to take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Madam, Counselor Morganelli.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. No, just a quick, I, I would hope that we, we get this data, maybe a link to our city website in the future. Is, are there plans for that?
Counselor Mello.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's actually online available for the public right now, so you could see the one that's at Westfield State, and as soon as ours are online, the data will be live and available to everyone.
On the city website, through the city website?
On their website, but I'm sure that there's a way to make a motion to add a link somewhere.
So I, I would like to, well, we can just, we could just see that that's done. That doesn't need a motion. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item three, we're gonna first vote on the immediate consideration. It's, it's gonna go to Counselor Figgy, and then Counselor Mello has something to say after that. Counselor Figgy.
Motion to, for immediate consideration of item three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion, Counselor Mello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Because I am a longtime family friend of one of the parties discussed, I will be abstaining from the discussion and vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please, Madam City Clerk, on immediate consideration.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
She abstained.
She is abstained.
Okay. Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Figgy.
Thank you. Make a motion to waive the right of first refusal to purchase 61A property located at 237 Fowler Road.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion, Counselor Figgy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This property has, is for sale. It was scheduled to close January 15th. The buyer's mortgage company saw there's a 61A restriction on it and wanted that restriction changed before they would grant the mortgage. So that's why it has come in front of us. We have the first right of refusal on any 61A property. It is a, in an area that I don't think the city would like to become a landlord for, so I'm recommending that we deny or turn down our first right of refusal.
Thank you. Counselor Sullivan.
Just a question, since they're just finding the 61A, did they calculate the rollback taxes?
That is all being done.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Counselor Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna support this. I'm just concerned about doing an immediate consideration when somebody's been receiving a tax break and kind of the obligation at the end of that is to go through this procedure and that we're doing it so quickly without a public hearing. I'm gonna support it only because I know if it gets sent to subcommittee, we don't have the funds or the setup or the plan to buy it, so it would kind of be a moot point. But I am hoping when we do this master plan that we'll come up with a plan about preserving agricultural land or maybe coming up with areas where we would like to do these type of buybacks. I believe we're able to use CPA funds for that. But I think, seeing that we don't have the plan set up, it's unwise to slow this down, but I do hope moving forward, we can take these a little more slowly. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Adams.
Yeah, I mean, I had a discussion with the ward counselor. I don't know if Counselor Burns wants to jump in, but my understanding is it'll go right back into 61A after they buy it, but I think Counselor Burns has a little more information on that, I think.
Counselor Burns.
Yeah, I had a, well, thank you, Mr. President. I had a long discussion with the, with the seller, and I, Counselor Sullivan was right in the, in the question about the back taxes. It's supposed to go back 10 years. They're supposed to own the property for 10 years, and they only owned it for eight years, so there's other, I believe, probably the tax, like their whoever. There's some other work to be done there. But Counselor Adams is correct. It's always been for farming. They cut hay there. And it's going to be continued, but supposedly the buyer is the financial institute won't, as councillor Figgy said, they won't accept the loan because there's a lien on the prop. So that's what this is. It's trying to get around that. If not, then they're going to have to back to another buyer, I mean, another loan. You know, so that's where we stand now. And thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Flaherty.
I understand councillor Burns is saying there's a lien on the property by the city. Is that the current status? So doesn't that have to be cleared up even if we don't buy?
No, there's not a lien, councillor Figgy, there's not a lien from the city, but it's automatic when there's a 61A. Because it's, because of the tax purposes.
They've got, there's a rollback that they've got to pay over the last five years of the 61A benefit that they got on property taxes. There's a, there's a, there's a rollback over the last five years that the assessors and the treasurer collector need to calculate what that number is. And that got, that has to be paid off. So they don't get the full benefit for the last five years. There's a rollback provision.
So it will become a lien that they have to pay before they can sell it?
They can't, right, which is kind of why I asked it because if this is being rushed and they didn't know it was in 61A, then did they know about the rollback taxes?
Right. Yes and no.
Well. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Madam City Clerk.
Bell Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
She abstained.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
I, I will ask, could somebody maybe call councillor Mello, let her know she could come back in? I'm not sure if she could hear or not.
She can.
Nobody has to call her. That's great. Item number four and others, councillor Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please have Madam City Clerk read items four through 17 and send to finance.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk.
Item four is an appropriation of $62,000 from free cash to purchasing department repair and maintenance account. Five is an appropriation of $47,000 from free cash to technology center replacement equipment to replace switches in the tech center and in city hall. Six is an appropriation of $15,000 from free cash to treasurer's department building account for improvements to the treasurer's office. Seven is an appropriation of $10,000 from free cash to animal control department full-time salary account. Eight is an appropriation of $70,000 from free cash to law department purchase of services account. Nine is an appropriation of $300,000 from free cash to airport purchase of services account for design phase of taxi B5. 10 is the appropriation of $112,910 from free cash to fire department supply account for supplies for replacement fire apparatus. 11 is an appropriation of $80,000 from free cash to fire department purchase of services for electronic locking system for all fire department exterior doors. 12 is an appropriation of $55,000 from free cash to the following short-term debt accounts. $30,000 to principal on short term for project 2358 Southampton Road Target and $25,000 to principal on short-term debt for project 2592B Airport HVAC. 13 is an appropriation of $700,000 from free cash to school department Westfield High School purchase of lands and buildings account for swimming pool repairs. And 14 is a transfer of $1,250.70 than the Public Works Department Highway Division Fiscal Year 22 Supplies Account to Fiscal Year 21 Supplies Account for a prior year bill. 15 is a transfer of $110.91 within the Department of Public Works Sewer and Wastewater Treatment Division from Fiscal Year 22 Purchase of Services Account to Fiscal Year 21 Purchase of Services Account for a prior year bill. 16 is a transfer of $602.80 within the Public Works Department Sewer and Wastewater Division Fiscal Year 22 Supplies Account to Fiscal 21 Supplies Account for a prior year bill. 17 is a transfer of $2,904.86 within the Public Works Department Water Division Fiscal Year 22 Purchase of Services Account to Fiscal Year 21 Purchase of Services Account for a prior year bill.
Thank you. Roll call please, Madam City Clerk.
Bell Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 18 and then some, councillor Figgy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please have Madam City Clerk read items 18 and 19. Refer to Ellen O'Leal.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Madam City Clerk.
18 is submitting a resolution to enter, to enter a funding agreement for Elm Street Urban Renewal Project. And 19 is submitting a resolution for consent to encroachment agreement for the James Hardy Building.
Thank you. Roll call please, Madam City Clerk.
Bell Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Items 20 plus councillor Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please have Madam City Clerk, actually before I make the motion, number 25, if I'm not mistaken, is being withdrawn from the, from the agenda, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Correct. Okay, so I will, we need a motion to do so or we just, we're fine without? Motion to withdraw item 25 from council agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Yeah, which is just a submission of an appointment of Ed O'Sousky, 17 O'Colony Drive as a member of the Flood Control Commission for the term to expire the first Monday of February 2027.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call please, Madam City Clerk.
Bell Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Councillor Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Have Madam City Clerk read items 20 through 24, then 26 through 36 and refer to POC.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, councillor Sullivan. Just real quickly, I, at this point, I'm not sure it's necessary, but I'm going to abstain from this vote just because item number 35 is a reappointment of my son to the ZVA, so I will not, I'll abstain.
At a conflict?
I don't know about sending it to committee, but better safe than sorry.
Understood, councillor Sullivan. Any further discussion? All right, Madam City Clerk, if you would read those, please.
Item 20 is submitting the reappointment of Jeffrey Goslin, 330 Elm Street as a member of the Commission for Citizens with Disabilities for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2025. 21 is submitting the reappointment of Thomas Sharp, 53 Simmons Brook Drive as a member of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2025. 22 is submitting the reappointment of Carl Grove, 130 Hawks Circle as a member of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2025. 23 is submitting the appointment of Lauren DeCarlo, 15 Angelica Drive as a member of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2025, replacing Clifford Laraway. 24 is submitting the reappointment of James Liptak by 15 Granville Road as a member of the Council on Aging for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2025. 26 is the reappointment of Edward Roman, 419 South Road to the Position of Municipal Light Board for, for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2024. 27 is submitting the reappointment of Kenneth McGarian, 131 Lowell and Drive as a member of the Parks and Rec Commission for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2025. 28 is the reappointment of Cheryl Crow, 40 New Broadway as a member of the Planning Board for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2027. 29 is submitting the reappointment of Chain McGarian, 131 Lowell and Drive as a member of the Planning Board for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2027. Number 30 is submitting the reappointment of Joseph Poplarzick, 39 Brayley Way as a member of the Water Commission for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2025. 31 is submitting the reappointment of Kathleen Wheates, 37 Evergreen Drive as a member of the Westfield Redevelopment Authority for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2026. 32 is submitting the reappointment of Mark Moran, 130 Lowell and Drive as a member of the Westfield Redevelopment Authority for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2026. 33 is submitting the reappointment of Thomas Woodson, 112 Squawfield Road as a member of the Westfield Redevelopment Authority for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2026. 34 is submitting the reappointment of William Parks, 78 Granville Road as a member of the Westfield Redevelopment Authority for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2027. 35 is submitting the reappointment of Richard K. Sullivan III as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2024. And 36 is submitting the reappointment of Sophia Beetzas, 354 Valley Drive as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire the first Monday of February 2023.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Roll call please.
Bell Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
He's abstained. We just put, I guess for all of them.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Reports of city officers.
There are none.
There are none. Thank you. Petitions, remonstrances and other papers. Item 37 is a public hearing on an application submitted by AmeriGas Rural Gas Service, 216 Lockhouse Road to amend their gas storage license from 36,000 gallons of propane to 66,000 gallons of propane. Is the, I'm going to call the public hearing to order now, is the petitioner here? And if so, please come forward. Raise your hand, state your name and address and tell us about the proposal.
The name would be Tim Griffin.
Thank you.
Okay, you can hear me?
Yes, I can hear you just fine.
Okay.
If, if you can, give your, your name, address and then tell us, tell us about the proposal, please.
Okay, my name's Tim Griffin. I'm the area manager from AmeriGas. I live in Chickaby, but the address is 216 Lockhouse Road. That's the location. What this amendment is, it's not adding any more gas. We had an inspection by Deputy Chief Warren and the state fire marshal in September. And they noticed that the license, the license has been, if the dates on the license are correct, they've been since 1946, 53 and 58. But they only were for the two large storage tanks we have. And the state fire marshal said that we shouldn't include all the empty tanks we have on the property and the trucks. So I added up the tanks and the trucks and you have to add the full capacity, even though they're empty. And that's where the additional storage comes in. We're not adding any gas. It's just to accommodate the empty tanks that are on our property and to park our trucks on the property. We're not really adding anything. It's just the tanks.
Thank you. Are there questions from the councillors? Any questions from the councillors? Councillor Bean.
Yeah, just, just a quick one, doubling of the tanks. So this gives you access though to fill those tanks, correct?
We've always had the tanks out. We, we have tanks that we order to set at new customers home and then we pick them up. So we always have some tanks on the property, but as soon as we bring them in, not necessarily that day, but we pump them out because we can't use the gas that's in them. So we pump them back into our storage. So probably right now, 95% of any tanks you see in the property are empty. That's the goal is to empty it. We don't store anything, you know, because we can't use them from them. Can't use the gas.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from councillors? All right, at this point, we'll open it up to the public for questions of fact. So if there's any, any questions of fact, how much, how big, how long, you know, please ask that. We'll have opinions on it later. Councillor Bell Trandy, first off.
Mr. President, councillor Mello actually had a question. I think she had her hand up.
Oh, thank you. If you guys can really wave, I've tried my best. I appreciate it. Thank you. Councillor Mello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councillor Bell Trandy. I am just wondering, is this a request to amend the permit? Because the permit is not currently covering the operations as they are being performed?
It's not to amend the per, not the permit, the permit from the fire department.
The license, the license, I'm sorry.
I, I, I don't know why in the past 60, 70 years, they haven't asked for the trucks. We, we've always parked trucks on the property and we've always had tanks. And I don't know why in 60, 70 years, they've never asked that. It was just until the state fire marshal came in and said that we should be including the tanks. So we're not doing anything different. We've always had tanks and trucks. If we weren't allowed to have tanks or trucks, we couldn't run the business because all we have a permit for or the current license is the two big storage tanks. We wouldn't even be able to deliver any gas. So this is just to maintain the operations, not changing anything.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions from the councillor? Raise your hand, wave it and all that so I could see it. Now, okay, we're going to open it back up to the public for questions of fact. If there's anybody in the public who have questions of fact, please raise your hand through Zoom and Pete Coles will let you in to ask your questions. Questions of fact. No one? Okay. Is there anyone in the public who's in favor of this application? Anyone from the public who's in favor of this application would like to speak to it? Please show your hand through Zoom. Is there anyone who is not in favor of this application from the public? Please show your hand in Zoom and you can say your piece. Okay, again, anyone in favor from the public? Anyone not in favor from the public? Okay, I don't see anyone for this, so councillor Bell Trandy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to close the public hearing and refer the license.
Motion made and seconded. Roll, discussion. Roll call. Roll call, please. Madam City Clerk.
Bill Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes in the hands of license. Now, item thirty-eight, Counselor Figgy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to allow the Law Department to respond to the open meeting law complaint, uh, filed against Counselor Bean, relative comments made in January 2022 meeting, relative allowing all counselors to participate in personal action committee and place on file.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Uh, Counselor Bean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, uh, just a couple of things. I, what I, it's really more than a, not a question, just more of a statement. Um, what I'd like to do, though, is, is maybe next meeting, and I'm hoping for full support, is to come up with a motion, um, to really explain um, the particular opinion that we received in the past, uh, the upheld stuff that the state did back, I don't know, it's been three years now, if I'm not mistaken, because we were in person when we did it, so it's about three years. Um, there's a lot of gray areas, uh, that need to be addressed. Um, I know several subcommittees in the last couple of weeks have had other counselors speak. Um, we've had a situation where, uh, you know, questions from counselors were brought to the chair, not in the room, but, you know, brought to the, uh, brought to the chair to have discussion and to be answered, you know, so there's a lot of what-ifs out there in this particular idea. Now, I'll remind everybody that this open meeting law violation is happening when I haven't had a meeting yet, which is kind of funny. But with that being said, um, I think we still need a better understanding on what we can do as counselors within subcommittee. You know, there's, um, it's just, we're, we're doing it all differently right now. And a lot of people aren't, don't even want to have subcommittees because they're afraid they're gonna be in the situation of breaking the open meeting law. Asking questions is one thing, deliberating is another. Uh, six people in a room, seven people in a room, other counselors asking questions for other counselors. I'm just kind of reading a list of stuff here. Other counselors speaking, which has happened just recently, with, you know, seven or eight counselors in a room. Other counselors have spoke, but they did not deliberate, in my opinion. So i- it's just, it, it's, this is a nuisance, really, but we need, as a group, it may be even the Commonwealth, because no one else is getting, um, this kind of scrutiny like us, because I've talked to other, uh, communities about it. Uh, but we're getting now rung up on stuff that we might think of, or we, we might say we're gonna do, and, and so forth, so, um, all I would ask is tread lightly in your subcommittees, because you'll, will at some point, a resident or another counselor, one might not like what you're doing, and this is the way for them to stop it, which is inappropriate in my mind. Uh, so what I will do is pen a motion, and I would ask for support, uh, two weeks from now, uh, to really get a black and white understanding of the open meeting law, especially within subcommittee. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion? All right, uh, seeing none, roll call, please. This is to, uh, put this on file and allow the, um, city attorney to respond to it. Roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Bill Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes. Mr. President, just one more comment. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the other thing I would say is that, I, I, just for full disclosure, uh, I did talk to the Law Department about me voting on this particular issue, and that is, and that is, that was okay for me to do so. So just in case I see another violation in the mail, I'll, you know, I, I, I got cover on that one as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, reports of committees. Finance Committee, item number thirty-nine, Counselor Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. On a three-zero vote from Finance of approval of an appropriation of $2,000 from Free Cash to Emergency Management Department, um, as followed, uh, seventeen hundred from purchase service accounts and $300 supply, uh, to supplies account. So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion, Counselor Bean.
Yeah, I mean, this one has been talked about, you know, a lot in front of us, and, you know, I did mention to the, uh, Emergency Management Director that he would need to start having conversations with the mayor when it was, uh, when it was pertaining to his budget, um, you know, standing at the podium and coming to the Finance complaining about the budget issues. It's something that we really can't do. We don't appropriate the money. We only approve. So what I will say is, um, $2,000 right now is really just a basic, basic budget. Uh, it's really for print materials, awareness events. Um, I'm not sure what you could, how much you can really do with $2,000, uh, but the, for obvious, obviously, this, this particular department is underfunded, so, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Counselor Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for this item and a few more items to come in, in coming weeks, uh, I would just like to have everyone remember exactly what Free Cash is, in that it was money that was not spent in the previous fiscal year, and so if, if budgets were shorted, say, in May and June, and we were maybe complaining that people weren't getting the right amount of money, to see that money move there now, um, I, I understand that there are a lot of items we have moving, but I just want, uh, you know, everyone in the public to understand that, um, you know, we're using this money that was left over to fill in things that we're missing before. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and I, I'll add that it's cumulative money. It's not just the prior year. It's going back and back and back. Um, thank you. Uh, roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Bill Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Item forty, Counselor Sullivan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would move, uh, acceptance of a grant in the amount of $41,600 from Mastod Aeronautics Division to the Airport Department. So moved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion, Counselor Sullivan.
Yep, quickly, Finance Committee met, and on a three-nothing recommendation recommends approval of this, um, acceptance. Uh, it is for a sustainability grant, um, through Mastod Aeronautics. Um, the airport will be buying a, uh, electric, uh, zero-turn mower, um, so that they can do the, uh, tight mowing, particularly around the, uh, airport lighting. Um, and probably, uh, second most important is there is absolutely no local match to this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Bill Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Item forty-one, Counselor Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday, January 31st, the Finance Committee met regarding the acceptance of a grant in the amount of $17,807.87 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Office and the Department of Fire Services to the Westfield Fire Department. And upon a three-to-nothing vote, we did move approval on the acceptance of the grant. So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion, Counselor Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. These funds will be used to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus fit testers, so the department will meet the standards of OSHA and the National Fire Protections Association. The money will also allow the Fire Department to purchase an extra set of gloves and a Nomex hood, which protects the portions of the head not covered by the helmet and the face mask for each member of the Fire Department. These purchases will help reduce the potential exposure of our firefighters to dangerous cancer-causing carcinogens that are produced during fires. This is the second year in a row the city has received this highly competitive grant to purchase specialized safety equipment. Technically, there is no match for this grant. However, the award is for roughly $18,000, and the quote for the equipment came in at about $20,000. The $2,000 shortfall for the purchase will come out of the existing Fire Department operating budget.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Bill Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Item forty-two, Counselor Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee has met, and with a three-o approval of appropriation of $930,000 from Free Cash to Engineering Construction Account for the following projects. $600,000 for the paving of Holy Oak Road and $330,000 for the paving of Union Street, Union Ave, Neck Road. Uh, this particular item was amended, previous request of a million five.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Counselor Bean.
Yeah, and another item we, I'm sorry.
Discussion for Counselor Bean.
Um, this is another item that we, we discussed as, as a body before. Um, I think the motion is pretty self-explanatory in the sense of paving and where the pavement will go. Um, if you've driven down those particular sections, uh, it is in well need of new pavement. Um, and there will also be some drainage work as well, um, if there's money left over, so pavement is expensive.
Discussion, further discussion, Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and, and I'm gonna be in favor of this, and I'm generally in favor of using Free Cash for one-time expenses. Uh, there was a whole laundry list of them that came in early on the agenda. Um, that's exactly what Free Cash should be used for. It shouldn't be used for balancing the budget for recurring growing operating expenses. So this, this is one-time money that we have available, and it should be spent on one-time expenses, so I'm all in favor of that. Uh, I just wanted to comment, though, that the, the Free Cash isn't, um, necessarily free or unexpected. It comes in when we have extra revenues that we couldn't book at the time of the budget. For example, in recent years, we've had marijuana money come in that we couldn't put on the budget because of the state law. So there is extra money that's coming into the city that we can then spend in the future. It also, um, gets generated if we don't spend the money that we originally budgeted. It doesn't mean we didn't need the money. For example, sometimes employees leave in January, and we had anticipated them staying through the whole year. So that's what contributes to this Free Cash. It's not any funny bookkeeping. It's not, uh, anything to do with, uh, productive management in most cases. It's, it's just a mathematical formula that calculates this extra money. And again, we can't count on having it from year to year, so using it for one-times thing is perfectly appropriate and is recommended best practice from the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Morganelli, then Counselor Ally, I believe you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Morganelli.
Um, yeah, wha- what section of Holy Oak Road is this cover? Because I know that, that road was, and Counselor Oniski, you're the ward council, you probably, um, uh, know when the last time that was paved, because it wasn't too long ago. Because I think of other roads, like, like Meadow Street is a mess. And we're, we're putting money onto a road that was paved recently when, when, even though Meadow Street was actually paved fairly recently, but I think it's been over ten years now, but do you, is it for the, it's not for the entire road, is it?
Yes, it's for the entire road. Um, i- if, if you talk to any residents there with the truck traffic, you hit any bump at all, and the, the trailer trucks, uh, coming from the quarry, empty, full, the whole truck shakes. It is, it is keeping, uh, everybody up at night. I've gotten more phone calls and emails on Holy Oak Road, and DPW does a good job, and they'll, they'll patch it, but, you know, the patch is still a little, you know, a bump. They go over that, and it, it is noisy, so, uh, that's why, uh, Holy Oak Road is being, uh, uh, on, on this list. It's, it's very important, uh, to, to all those residents. One of them had, uh, put a letter that's in the share drive, but it's, uh, it's, it's noisy without this, so that's why that's being done.
Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Ally, and then Adams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so I, I thought originally, one, that this was just for one section of, of the road, and the mayor, before he was mayor, had talked about Holy Oak Road and how that was a priority. But I thought it was the infrastructure, as much as, um, the trucks were also hitting, like, the manhole covers, which sends, uh, vibrations down on, on the streets that are lateral, um, off of Holy Oak Road. Um, the same thing happens on Paper Mill in certain areas, but, um, so is any of this money going to, to address that issue? And I, I also didn't think it was a whole road. I just thought it was, like, broken up into sections. It was one section of Holy Oak Road.
Uh, either Counselor Bean, you can answer. I've got the answer, if you like.
Well, I will say that Union, it's, there's sections of Union Street that are being done, so that, maybe that's where the confusion came. Um, and, and I'll say that the mayor drove the streets with the city engineers. I give them credit for that, so even reducing the, the amount of Free Cash being used. So the portion of Union Street is being done, but it is the full road um, on the other one. So, you know, as far as moving the manhole covers, uh, or, you know, like, I'm, I'm assuming you mean realigning them on the road itself, so the tires won't hit them. That's not part of the discussion, so. At least it wasn't in our, in our committee.
I wouldn't think that kind of.
Yeah, I might add, they are gonna do some of that, uh, Counselor Bean. There's also been some of that happening before this, so they're, they're moving them off so the tires aren't hitting the drainage, uh, you know, catch basins, so that, that's happening. It's, it's happening now, actually. Some of it's already started there. Does that answer your question, Counselor Ally?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Adams.
Yeah, no, I just had a quick, uh, comment, I guess. I, I know I have no problem with the approciate, appropriation. I just want to make sure, every time I drive down Union Street, that the salt city there, I know there were, there were some issues there, um, and they were supposed to be keeping that salt inside. Every time I drive by there, there's piles of salt. So I just hope we address that before we go paving Union Street. Um, because I know there was a problem with the salt going under the street or onto the street. So I'm hoping that's been addressed, but every time I drive by there, the salt's still outside, so. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I know they were in to us because they had several violations that they had to fix down there, so I'm just hoping that they've been fixed.
Uh, yes, thank you, Counselor Adams. I mean, that might be something we need to bring, uh, to the Building Department or Conservation. Uh, I, I know they have been building sheds in that area to cover some of this, and I'm only answering because I drive by it all the time, and it's in Word Six, so. Uh, Counselor Bill Trandy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, with regard to Union Street, maybe I can clear it up a little bit. I don't think the section that we're talking about is in front of the salt pile. Um, it's a section that the, we did some infrastructure work in, uh, new curbs, sidewalks, and all of that area. I think there was some discussion a couple of years ago about the salt pile, and I think there was some remediation done there. I don't think it's been an issue, but the areas that we're talking about are the areas where the construction has gone on, where desperately needs to be repaved. And I think that, uh, we addressed a lot of subsurface problems with that area, because it's been continual for as long as I've lived in Westfield, and it just keeps coming back. And, uh, with regard to, uh, Meadow Street, as Counselor Morganelli mentioned, uh, one of the biggest problems we have with Meadow Street is that the infrastructure that was put in, uh, we never really did any of the subsurface work correctly, and that's why we keep having deficiencies there. So that's gonna be a big project moving forward, because you're gonna have to redo everything on that street in order to stop the problem you have.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Bill Trandy?
Yes.
Burns? Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Item forty-three, Councilor Sullivan.
Yes, Mr. President, I would move approval of a transfer in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifteen cents from the police towing and storage account to the police equipment vehicle account for the purpose of replacing the administrative detective bureau vehicle. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Councilor Sullivan.
Yep, pretty straightforward. They're using, the police are recommending using the police towing and storage account, which has enough money in it to make this transfer and buy a new vehicle. As described, they will be surplusing a two thousand nine Taurus. It'll be replaced by a two thousand twenty-two Edge. This price, the thirty-eight thousand, three eighty-seven fifteen is an all-in price. There are no additional costs for any additional accessories or light bars. And the current two thousand nine Taurus, as I said, will be surplus and auctioned. And the proceeds of that auction will go to the general fund.
Thank you. Further discussion, Councilor Bean.
I'll just add that the chief did, you know, did say that there's about forty-five to fifty thousand dollars left in that particular account, so.
Thank you. Further discussion. Seeing none, roll call please, Madam City Clerk.
Andy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Item forty-four, Councilor Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday, January thirty-first, the Finance Committee met regarding an appropriation of twenty thousand dollars from free cash to the Personnel Department Purchase of Services account to modernize the methods for posting open positions. And upon a three to nothing vote, we decided to recommend the appropriation, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Councilor Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Westfield now has twenty job openings across the city during a historically tight labor market, leading to few applicants for jobs. Currently, our canvassing method consists of using newspapers and the city website to post jobs. However, times have changed and these methods are a bit outdated. The Personnel Department would like to update our strategy for finding new applicants on centralized recruiting hubs such as Glassdoor or Indeed to conduct our job search. However, there are costs associated with these websites that we are not currently budgeting for. Postings can cost from a hundred fifty dollars to upwards of a hundred fifty dollars a job and they fluctuate on the level of the position we are searching for. Generally, the higher the position, the more expensive is the search as it must filter for qualifications such as technical skills, education and certification. Typically, one job post on an online recruiting site nets twenty to thirty applicants, which results in ten to fifteen qualified applicants, which brings in a suitable pool to interview. The Personnel Department has experimented with these online recruiting sites with our currently open animal control and emergency dispatch positions, which are hard to recruit for. The online search has resulted in an increase in qualified applicants who are in the middle of the interviewing process with the city as we speak. Councilor Sullivan asked whether the new system had capabilities to track not just the number of qualified applicants, but also their hiring and retention. And Robert Bishop, the head of Personnel, confirmed that he would be able to provide these metrics by watching the new hires who came in through this method over the life cycle of their employment in our system. This twenty thousand should be more than enough to take us to the next budgeting season and it is anticipated that it will be in the budget for next year.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Morganelli, then Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, that's a pretty big number. And I'm you know, how can we just appropriate twenty thousand dollars to this instead of doing a smaller amount, seeing if it's successful and then re-appropriating for the next budget season? So I disagree with just throwing out a lump sum there and not seeing the results. And I'm seeing no data on other communities, other cities or towns that have done this and the results that they've gotten. I don't see a letter here from a mayor from another city. I mean, I I have faith in Mr. Bishop's ideas on this and the mayor appropriating, wanting to appropriate this, but I just think that's a huge number to be throwing out there right away. Let's, you know, do something less and see how it goes and then we can appropriate it in the next budget season if we see the results that we're looking for. Thank you.
Councilor Flaherty and then Matthews Kane.
Thank you. And I've been an advocate for this for a while. I think it's a great use of money. In the private sector, you could look at spending about a third of a person's salary to do a recruitment. I don't think this is a waste of money. You know that if you put an ad in the paper, even a few inches square, you know, you're talking five to eight hundred dollars in a local newspaper. But a place like Indeed or Glass Ceiling Place or some of the others, you know, a small dollar investment gets you very broad exposure. And I think it's you know, very good to spend money to recruit the right people. Just assuming that everybody's going to look at the Westfield newspaper, for example, or MMA.org is really limiting your audience by using, you know, these popular job places. You've got to get a big pool. And twenty thousand dollars in the big scheme of things when we're hiring, you know, we have about ninety million dollars worth of payroll here, it's not a big number in the big scheme of things. So I would encourage us to pass this amount. I would be perfectly fine going forward if we came up with a budget for every position, say, you know, two to twenty percent, you know, recruitment cost depending on the level of the job. I think that's a fair way to do it in today's market. So I would encourage everybody to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in response to an earlier comment, they did experiment with this with the animal control and the emergency dispatch. They were having a hard time getting qualified applicants through their typical methods and they did use these as a test case and they did find the results were much better. And I just want to say we have twenty open positions. We're really hamstrung by those by the fact that we don't have workers in the positions where we need them. I think this will just make our government function more effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Bell Trandy.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think if you look at what we have for openings right now and the problem we've been having, filling the DPW director position, you know, we've got the assessors position coming up, all these other vacancies. We need to expand our ability to get candidates in. And I think this is a good way to do that. Clearly, what we've been doing hasn't been working if you look at where we are. So I'm going to vote in favor of this. I think it's a good idea and I encourage everybody to support it as well.
Thank you, Councilor. Any further discussion? Council Morganelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's probably not going to pass, but a motion to reduce to ten thousand dollars. I'm sorry, yeah, ten thousand dollars. Thank you.
Motion made. And I do not see a second. So back to the original motion. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Madam City Clerk.
Bell Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Item forty-five, Councilor Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee has met and gives a favorable approval of three zero for the appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars from free cash to Department of Public Works Waste Collection and Disposal Division for the following anticipated expenses of eighty-five thousand dollars for purchase of services account, thirteen thousand to overtime account and two thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand dollars to out-of-grade account. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion, Councilor Bean.
Yeah, I will be brief. It is, the bulk of this expenditure is the increase in disposal costs. The rate, it went from eighty-two dollars to eighty-three fifty per tonnage. And the out-of-grade cost is really due to vacancies and overtime.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
No. Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Yeah, this has been, this has been kind of a common theme here. You're seeing increases every year on this particular item, so we probably should pay attention to this as we move forward with our new budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Flaherty.
Yes. Can you tell the public how the, I think it's eighty-five dollar per home fee, you know, is used here? And are we collecting more money with that eighty-five dollar fee than we're actually spending for trash removal? Does anybody know?
I know in our, in our subcommittee meeting, we did talk about the trash fee itself. And I know there's some case work out there that shows that, you know, if you got to show that you're paying your taxes and I'm doing this disjustice, but not doing it justice at all, but it's one of those things that, you know, listen, we're paying eighty-five dollars a year for our trash removal. Barrels, you know, people come in, barrels are dumped and then it disappears from our site. So although a very inexpensive fee, very difficult to raise it in any way, shape or form. So I know that doesn't answer your question, Council Flaherty, but I, you know, it's
I just think the costs are higher than they were actually paying. And I think people should know that. I don't have the exact number, but I believe the total cost of running the trash place and getting rid of all the trash is more than we take in in that fee.
It is significantly more. It's not even close.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Oh, Cindy, sorry. All right, Council Harris, please.
That's all right. Thank you. I hope you're not suggesting that we're going to have an increase in the trash fee. We just increased sewer fees as citizens. We just raised everybody's taxes. We raised everybody's taxes last year. We all, we did this in the last two months and yet we're sitting here with pages after pages of free cash going to here, there and everywhere. Some of it very legitimate, some of it could probably be put off for a while. But I hope that's not the suggestion that we are now going to pass a tree fee, a trash fee on to the citizens.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Flaherty.
Yeah, thank you. No, and I wasn't suggesting that. I just want to make the public aware that we spend more than we take in because some people think that they're getting robbed by having to pay an eighty-five dollar fee. The reality is it costs us a lot more than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Bell Trandy.
Just real quick, and just, you know, don't lose sight of the fact that, you know, the cost of fuel and the cost of the tipping have dramatically increased over the past twelve or thirteen months. So, you know, that has to go somewhere. I mean, they can't absorb it. It's going to go back to the people that are paying the tax. It's just a reality. So, you know, there's no way to get around that. So, you know, that's just, it's a reality.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Madam City Clerk.
Bell Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Item forty-six, Council Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd move approval of the appropriation of seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars from the Department of Public Works Sewer Wastewater Division to the following accounts, six hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars to the purchase of services, one hundred thousand dollars to supplies, fifty thousand dollars for additional capital equipment. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, Council Sullivan.
Yep, really, the real reason for the need for the transfer in this case is if everybody remembers, they're only allowed to budget what the state certifies from the previous year that is available. So they short the account. It's coming back. This is all coming from within the sewer, Public Works Sewer Wastewater Division accounts. Primarily, it is the sludge hauling contract, which is another one that is an expensive proposition. It does include some G and E bills. The supplies are mostly all chemical in nature. The capital expenses are relatively minor, but is a blending system that is housed up on the Neck Road facility. Some dewatering upgrades, as well as some pipe upgrades at the Ellis and Shaker Road facilities. So all in, it's the seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Madam City Clerk.
Bell Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Item forty-seven, it is Council Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday, January thirty-first, the Finance Committee met regarding the transfer of seventy-five thousand dollars within the Department of Public Works Water Division as follows. Fifty thousand dollars from health insurance account to overtime account and twenty-five thousand dollars from full-time hourly account to purchase of services account. And upon a three to nothing vote, we decided to recommend the acceptance. We decided to recommend the transfer, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, Council Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to pay off an expense for overtime due to an unanticipated problem. There was a water main break near the intersection of Court Street and High Street due to an error. There were water lines that had been abandoned in the nineteen fifties and before. These lines were still connected to the water main, although they were capped and not in service. However, there was no documentation in the city's records that these abandoned water lines were there. Because there was no record of them being there, the contractor doing the utility work severed four-quarter inch services in close proximity to each other. If there had been a record, the area would have been marked and hand digging would have been used in the area of the old lines. Instead, the contractor used a large machine to dig, which severed the old lines. This mistake was due to the faulty records of the city, leaving the liability on our side. Once the line was breached, the water line that fed the leak could not be shut down. Further complicating the situation was that the break was next to Noble Hospital and continuous water service to the hospital had to be provided. Severely cold temperatures further hampered the repair. This mistake resulted in seventy-five thousand dollars in extra overtime work. There was approximately forty thousand in contractor overtime expenses, money towards police overtime to oversee the situation and incidental expenses. The money will be coming from the Department of Public Works Water Division overtime in full-time hourly account due to money available due to three vacancies in water. The auditor verified there is enough money insurance for the transfer. In closing, I just want to note that this is my ward and right up the street from my house, I saw it with my own eyes. It was quite the gusher. So.
Did you grab a shovel and help them hand dig the
No, but I did walk by over several days to see the river.
Thank you. Any is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Madam City Clerk.
Bell Trandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Item forty-eight, Councilor Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee has met and gives a favorable approval of a vote of three-zero for the appropriation of two million, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and ten dollars from Department of Public Works Water Undesignated Account to the following. Purchase of Service Account, I'm sorry, two million, ninety-one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars to Purchase Service Account, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars to Supplies Account, and two hundred thousand dollars to Equipment Vehicle Account. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion, Councillor Bean.
Yeah, I did provide, a few days ago, I did provide a list of items that were pertaining to this particular motion on the shared drive. Knowing that this was a large expenditure, I will remind everybody that there is no tax dollars within this department. It's all rate. It's all the fees that are paid from the water. Some of the highlights, I know Purchase of Service Accounts, you can, if people have the list in front of you, it's there was some refurbishing of the office on Sackett Street. Some of the work that is going on within these, in this account also is really updating our own facilities. Reservoir Road, Sackett Street Parking Lot. There's also a G and E item here, as well as Western Avenue Phase Two, which we see as you drive by there as well. And that's Purchase of Services Account, the Supplies Account. And if anybody has any questions about that particular one, just let me know. The Supplies Account really comes down to a lot of the chemicals really to treat the water. That's the bulk of that list. And the vehicle, which we all love vehicles. This water, water vehicle is in a CDL freightliner. Although large in size, anybody can drive it, which is, which is good news, so it doesn't take a different license to do so. This really will get rid of the trailer that they've had for the last ten, fifteen years. And it's really it doesn't owe anybody anything at this point, but this new vehicle will actually encase all our tools, and it will make them secure and safe. Any work that needs to be done on site, this truck will go out, and they can do it in bad, in climate weather. They'll be able to work inside, do whatever they need with fittings and cutting and so forth. They'll be able to do that inside and then bring out the equipment to install. So that's, that's really good news as well. This one, this item had come up to us before. I want to say a few years back, and it was cut. But I do think now there's a real need for it, especially now that the trailer is failing. They also put a trench box in here, if anybody knows what that is, so you can imagine the size of the vehicle as well. That's really it, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Councillor Sullivan.
Yeah, no question, but just to kind of clarify, the Upper Western Avenue project, we had spent, as a, as a body, we've spent time on that. Originally, people may remember that that came in as a request for a free cash transfer from the City General Fund, and then we, as the council, reworked that to a bond request. And now, as it turns out, they will be, in fact, paying cash from the Water Division Account. So there will be no bond that will be issued for the upper, for the Western Avenue work that was done there before. So in the end, I think a pretty good resolution, but it certainly didn't look the same as it started.
Thank you. Further discussion, Councillor Flaherty.
Yep. Can you address what they're getting for seventy thousand dollar office renovation? Seems like they have a pretty nice building there already.
Let me see, hold on. I know the only note I have here is that some of the work, most of the work was being done not really in the office space, but across the way. There's some office space there that was in need of updating, and that's my words, not theirs, but that's the only information I have on that at this point.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes, reluctantly, but yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you, Finance, for those many items.
Mr. President, Mr. President, could I just add one just for information only there? Just so the councillors know, the police contract was tabled and left in committee, which is why it is not on the agenda tonight. It was tabled to our next Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you. Legislative and Ordinance Committee, item forty-nine, Councillor Burns.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. On February first, Eleanor met and with a three-zero vote, we recommended approval of a resolution for approval and to sign on behalf of the City of Westfield, the Fourth Amendment to the inter-municipal agreement between the Town of Southwick and the City of Westfield for treatment and disposal of wastewater. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion, Councillor Burns.
Yeah, very quickly, Mr. President, this is, this is a, it's a reflection of the recent wastewater rate increase that was incurred. And it's for, of course, it's for the treatment and disposal of wastewater from our, from our good friends and neighbors in Southwick.
Thank you. Any further discussion? From our friends in the City Council, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Councillor Belltrandy, would you like to make a motion? Or I'm sorry, Councillor Burns, would you like to make a motion to read the resolution?
Yeah, with the consent of the, yeah, with the consent of the Chair, I would like to make a motion to present the resolution by title only.
Yes.
You want me to read it?
Yes.
I will read it. Resolution is the City Council of City of Westfield authorizing the mayor to approve and sign on behalf of the city the Fourth Amendment modification and can conform agreement between the Town of Southwick and the City of Westfield for the treatment and disposal of wastewater.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor. Item fifty, Councillor Adams.
Yes, the Eleanor was met on February first and votes three and oh in favor of a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a preservation restriction for the Westfield Women's Club, Inc., twenty-eight Court Street.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion, Councillor Adams.
Yeah, this is basically to ensure the protection of the city investment of its CPA funds for the new accessible entrance at the Women's Club. It was two hundred and thirty-five thousand that came from the CPA funds, and I will have to say, they did an absolutely wonderful job on that building. You would never know that, that addition, that's a nineteen-twenty-six building that was built nineteen-twenty-six. You'd never know that that addition was put on within the last year. And I did notice, there was a familiar name on the bottom there, and maybe that the good councillor Mello would be maybe in one of the next productions down there. I didn't know. Mello, if that's possible or not, but.
Second.
I, I hand out the pamphlet sometimes, little programs, like.
Any further discussion, Councillor Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President. Because the signatory is my mother, I have, in fact, filed disclosure with the clerk and have no problem exercising my ability to hold her and her friends responsible to keep their promise.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, so roll call, please, Madam City Clerk, and then I'll ask Councillor Adams to read the resolution by title only.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
I made it back, yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Councillor Adams.
Motion for a resolution authorized the mayor to execute a preservation restriction for the Westfield Women's Club, Inc., twenty-eight Court Street.
Second.
Okay, well, I think we already voted on it, so for him to read, but I'll, I'll second it too, but we're gonna move on regardless to item fifty-one, Councillor Flaherty.
Thank you. ZPD met on the third of February and prior week. And item number fifty-one is petition to amend zoning ordinance to allow taprooms and similar accessory uses in industrial aid district. On a three-zero vote, we voted to hold this item in committee.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion, Councillor Flaherty?
Yes, just briefly, we have some lingering questions about the difference between a special permit process and the public hearing process in the License Commission. So a couple of the councillors are gonna do some investigation and talk to Planning Department, License Commission, and attorneys, and we will have another meeting next week and hopefully bring this forward for action by Councillor Figgy in the Eleanor meeting.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Belltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Item fifty-two, Councillor Flaherty.
Yes, again, the ZPD met on February third in the prior week to talk about a truck terminal moratorium. And on a three-zero vote, we recommend the acceptance of a petition for zoning amendment from the ZPD Committee. And further that we schedule public hearings at the earliest convenience with the planning and City Council.
Sir, a second. Second. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion, Councillor Flaherty.
Yes, this is a hot topic. We've edited this proposal several times. We had great discussions in committee. And I'll just read it. It's, I know it's gonna be on the council's share. The application should be there, but the wording, I think we should just read so that we address concerns of the citizens. So it's to create section four dash fifty, a temporary, temporary moratorium on truck terminals. Quote, regardless of where otherwise stated in the zoning ordinance, truck terminals, warehouses, and distribution centers are a prohibited use, with such existing uses remaining subject to the provisions and protections of section four dash ten. This moratorium shall expire one hundred and eighty days after the planning board's adoption of a new master plan intended to comprehensively study such use impacts, provided at least one year of local air quality monitoring data has also been collected. In no case shall this moratorium extend beyond December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. At such expiration, this section shall be deleted in its entirety without recourse to any further amendment in public hearing process.
Thank you. Any further?
Yeah, I just want to say that there's gonna need to be some discussion about what is a truck terminal, what's a warehouse, and what's a distribution center. Our zoning ordinance has defined truck terminal well and pretty broadly, but it doesn't define distribution center or warehouses. The intent of this committee was not to prohibit warehouses, for example, that are tied to the back of a restaurant to receive food or for small production operations that only have one truck, you know, a little tiny truck a week. So during the public hearing process, we're gonna have to smooth out these words to make sure we're targeting the thing that we intended to target, which was the high-traffic, large truck facilities. It's a temporary moratorium. The Law Department has told us that it is perfectly legal, legal and acceptable to do it this way with a temporary sorry, one hundred and eighty days. That's an acceptable number. And because the air quality is a factor, sorry, we added that in as well. Thank you.
Hey, want us to go to somebody else, Dave?
Yeah, Bridget.
Councillor Belltrandy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually gonna be a no on this, which probably isn't a big surprise to everybody, but I just don't think it's a good idea for us to put moratoriums on at a time when we're trying to market our city and bring in tax revenue. You know, nobody's in favor of trucks, but they're a reality. They're gonna travel through here, whether they park here or not. We went through this on the truck terminals when we did Old Dominion. So I just don't want to restrict us on anybody that's planning on bringing a business into Western Mass with a moratorium. So I'm a no on this.
Thank you. Councillor Sullivan and Matthews Kane.
I, I may have missed it, and I apologize for that, but where did this petition come from and when did it come to us initially?
I believe councillor Babinski was the first one to submit it. But I'm not sure who submitted the last round. So it's been, it's been here for a while.
Okay.
Councillor Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would agree with Councillor Belltrandy, except for one thing, that we're going to be doing a plan for the city in that this is something that we want to think about, and I think it's just a temporary stopgap measure until we kind of gather our thoughts and think about how we want development to be on the north side. So if we're just, and actually Attorney Reed said it wouldn't even be legal if we didn't have the time limit and the kind of reason behind it. So in light of that, I'm going to be supporting it. Thank you.
Councillor Bean.
Yeah, I'm gonna follow suit with Councillor Belltrandy on this one. I, you know, every, every project should be valued on its merit, you know, so sort of like what we're doing with that taproom issue, too. It's, there's a lot of what-ifs in my mind, and I, I just feel that we already have plenty of hurdles to jump and planning processes in place and boards and commissions to really make judgments on these things. I, I agree with you. I, you know, grew up on the hill, and I know the traffic that we're seeing on the north side, and I get just as many complaints as everybody else. But we, it's, I think, subject to the situation. I said one hundred and eighty days is obviously not a lot of time for anything. So I'm not really sure what that would slow down. But it definitely sends a message out there to the surrounding area and across the country that, you know, Westfield really doesn't want these things. That might be a nice thought, but we might want one coming down the road, and I'd just rather take it situation by situation, and we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just answer that question? Can I answer?
Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The one hundred and eighty days is one hundred and eighty days after the planning board's adoption of the new master plan. And the reason we put one hundred and eighty days in there is because the master plan could come out, and then it could require zone changes that take months to process. You know, there has to be an application and this series of public hearings and a couple of votes. So one hundred and eighty days after the master plan is reasonable enough to implement the goals of the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ally and then Councillor Mello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'm gonna be a no on this as well. I mean, Councillor Matthews Kane, you brought up a good point where you, things need to be thought through, you know, and Councillor Bean spoke to it on an individual basis. There may be people planning to do something in Westfield, and then this gets floated out there, and the total time involved could be like, all right, this is just too uncertain. And businesses have enough uncertainty and obstacles to deal with right now with supply chain and everything that's going on. It's insane. The purpose of a master plan or anything you're doing should be well thought out and the overall benefit, cost benefit and that sort of thing. So this thing's been hanging around for a bit, and now it's just sort of floating back out here. We're not really thinking this thing through. When things go in front of the planning board, they do an amazing job of vetting things within their purview. They do a tremendous amount of work. It's the same thing on any of these, you know, projects that come before us, but we really have to think as a council you know, over a period of time, and we're not really being given that. So I'm gonna be a no on this, because I'd rather have things thought, well thought out and discussed openly, you know, and on an individual basis, as like Councillor Bean has brought up. That's really how we should judge these things. You know, we have enough a hard time with that sometimes with focusing on an individual. a hard time with that sometimes with focusing on an individual situation. That really merits those things, so I'm gonna be a no.
Thank you. Counselor Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President. I absolutely support this, and for more than the obvious reason. And, you know, which is odd, but my number one reason is that you can't ask a bunch of DOT engineers to solve a problem when you're constantly moving the finish line. So it, if you're asking them to handle the truck traffic we have now, and they're gonna do all these projections, and they're gonna say, we're gonna put this little roundabout in, we're gonna redo Southampton Road. You can't then just say, okay, we're gonna add hundreds more trucks on that, do it again. That we can't, we do need to think this through. I think, I think Counselor Matthews Kane and Counselor Ally are absolutely correct. You can't, you can't keep moving the bar. That's not, we're never gonna solve the problem if you constantly add to it. So I think a moratorium is absolutely appropriate in terms of the master plan, in terms of the amount of work DOT is gonna be putting into this, and in, especially in terms of the target MEPA process that's looming there. You know, planning to add even more trucks up there. So I, I think we've already hit a limit where a moratorium is rational and sane, and anything else just adds more problems to the people who are trying to solve them, and I just don't think we're gonna dig our way out of this hole that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Morganelli for the first, Counselor Harris, please.
That's all right. Mr. Morganelli can go first.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I mean, I can certainly hear both sides of this issue. What, what good really does a, does a temporary moratorium do? What message does it send to the business community? You know, how does it, where does it put Westfield on the map as far as being business-friendly? Cuz just saying that companies may think that we are not business-friendly, and we are. But I've gotten quite a few emails, and I've talked to people. I just had breakfast last week with two gentlemen from Ward One. And being the Ward One Counselor, I have to speak for the people of Ward One. And anything that can reduce trucks, even if it's temporary, is, is something that many, many residents have spoken to me about. The speed is another issue, and I'm, I'm working on, on a solution to that, a long-term solution. But the, the truck traffic is, is another issue. So I, I have to take a vote, yes, for, for the people of Ward One on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Harris and then Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for whoever has the answer. The master plan is supposed to be completed when? And then you add one hundred eighty days on top of that, so can you give me a date that we are talking about?
Yes, the latest date?
Yes.
Sorry. The latest date will be December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. They expect the master plan process to be completed in twenty twenty-three in the first or second quarter, and then we add one hundred eighty days to that to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Correct. So we're actually going to twenty twenty-four and saying we are not interested in any business at all coming in that has trucks.
Twenty twenty-three. The latest date it could be is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Right, which goes into twenty-four.
Yep.
So you're saying that we want no business for two years?
We're saying we don't want trucks.
We don't want trucks.
Truck terminals, distribution centers, or warehouses, new, not existing for that period of time while we evaluate what the goals of the master plan are and complete the air study. I will also say that the Planning Board led us to taking this back up. The Planning Board asked Mr. Bravinsky to bring this back to us so that we could get action moving on it. It's a health issue for people. It's a quality of life issue for people. They've been asking for this for years. There will be subsequent public hearings. This isn't us voting to do this. It's not voting to implement the moratorium. It's voting to move it forward into the public hearing process. There'll be a public hearing in front of the Planning Board, and the Planning Board will send their recommendation to the City Council. It'll be a public hearing in the City Council. They'll come back to ZPD and probably modify it a little bit. Like I said, there's, there's a question about the definitions of truck terminals, warehouses, and distribution centers in our own zoning ordinances that are kind of messy. It's gonna come back to ZPD, and then it will go to LNO and then full vote for the City Council. So there's a lot of opportunity to tweak this. We thought that this def, you know, the way it's written is very reasonable, given the concerns of the citizens. And again, it's all about health and quality of life for people. We can't have a great town if we completely ignore people's right to clean air and quality of life. And when we have people come to us and ask us to protect those things, I think we should take it seriously. Again, we're not voting to approve this tonight. We're just voting to move it forward into the public hearing process. And there's gonna be probably six more times when people can weigh in and make edits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that excellent explanation.
I'm sorry. Counselor, do you have anything further?
Thank you for that excellent explanation, and I was part of the motion to, to stop truck traffic up there years ago.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ally and then Morganelli.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I think all of us understand the issue with the trucks up in Ward One. I mean, it's the Mass Pike entrance, it's that the last one for almost, almost forty miles. And it being the crossroads of New England. And so we're all concerned with the trucks. There's new technologies. There's things coming down the Pike, if I can say it like that, that we wanna be able to consider, or people consider Westfield. We struggled with Old Dominion, which is really the gold standard for the, in the industry. And some people still voted against that, where if we could mandate anything, we, we want everything up there to those kind of standards. So those are the types of things that we should be considering. Okay? We can certainly make improvements. You know, the, the truck traffic is an issue. But to, to have a moratorium on something that could last, you know, close to two years in terms of planning, that, that is a huge amount of time. That's something that could be a benefit to the city, and, and like I said, I, I would like to see things to that level. You know, let's, let's improve things. But we would be blocking anything that coming through, considering it. So that's why I'm gonna be a no. I mean, I live right off of that. I mean, I know how bad it is up there. But, and there were other solutions that need to be worked in as well, you know, with that exit, but thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Morganelli and then Mello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, to, to Counselor Ally's point, it kind of goes along with what I was going to say, is that there, there's other truck traffic that it does not involve a truck terminal. I mean, when, when you build a building, like, you know, the data centers that we were talking about, building thirteen buildings and all the construction trucks that have to show up to get those buildings built, the concrete, the brickwork, the whatever happens to come in there, that's a lot of trucks. Anytime there's any development, trucks just driving through from south, you know, Southampton South, or they come out of Holyoke down North Road, or there, there's other trucks that come from other communities that go through Westfield, trucks that go, get off the Pike, and they go out to, out to Russell, out to the Berkshire. So there's always going to be trucks. They're, they're there. I, I think what, what the, what everybody needs to understand is that this is for a truck terminal. And to Counselor Ally's point, you could get a really good company that comes in that wants to build the truck terminal with a warehouse and a distribution center, and they have, you know, a hundred trucks a day, but the trucks are, maybe they're electric trucks, maybe they're trucks with high, highly efficient, you know, high fuel efficiency, pretty clean, quiet, with all the, and you know what you have. You, the company comes in, you know what you have. What you don't know is these other contractors that people are getting to, to build buildings and come through the city, and, and you don't know sometimes what, what they're going to bring. So there's pros and cons to either side of it. I, I don't particularly like the two-year maximum moratorium, almost two years. But I, again, I, I have to vote for the, for the people of Ward One, but I, again, I do see both sides of the issue. Thank you.
Counselor Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question and then a couple comments. Is a moratorium like this, if it were to go through and be voted on, is it able to be rescinded? Should the best truck terminal ever show up on our doors saying, we wanna bring our electric trucks to you? Is there, is something? Is it possible to pull it back?
I would say anything's possible by a vote of the council, yes, but it's a zoning change, so it required going through the zoning process again. This one automatically timed out at December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, if not sooner, because we satisfy these goals. So does that answer your question?
It, it does, and we can move on to my comment. Thank you. Thank you very much. Here's the thing. The, the chemicals that we're exposed to on the north side, we can't consider them individually. We get them in a cumulative way. Okay? And so when we think about these developments that add contaminants to our air and our water, we need to think about them in a cumulative way. And it, it's interesting. I actually noticed just under a month ago, we all made an oath. We took an oath to support the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, whose Article ninety-seven, you know, grants us the right to clean air and water. And sometimes, sometimes these conversations to me sound like talking about not supporting that in exchange for money and, and, and tax dollars for the city, and our residents have begged us for help, including, you know, me and others. And the thing is, this is one way in which we can actively honor the oath that we took. Thank you.
Thank you. We had Counselor Beltrandy and then Bean.
Thank you. I'm just gonna reiterate. It's a slippery slope. Once you start putting moratoriums in place, you know, people don't look at us as a community that's receptive to business. So you have to be very careful what you do here. You know, once you start putting these things in place, it's hard to reverse it. And, you know, nobody's gonna look at it and say, well, we'll come in, and then they'll reverse it. We're out of the ballgame. So just be careful what you wish for.
Thank you. Counselor Bean?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
You're all set. Any other discussion? All right, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Alchandey?
No.
Burns?
No.
Figgy?
No.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Adams?
No.
Ally?
No.
Bean?
No.
Madam City Clerk, what's the, what's the score on that one?
Five yes.
Five yes. Motion fails. Item fifty-three, Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you. ZPD met on February third and on a three-zero vote, voted to move forward on a zoning board of appeals request to amend zoning amendments at sections two twenty, three forty, fifty, one ten, one twenty, and four thirty, related to residential kennel restrictions, particularly lot area. We are recommending that we schedule public hearings and hold the item in ZPD.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion, Counselor Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. This originated from zoning board of appeals. They've had several instances where there's a lack of clarity and lack of flexibility when it comes to kennels. They sent over suggested language that was run through the Planning Department. We reviewed it and thought it was appropriate to move forward to have public hearings in the Planning Board and City Council. And because it's already in our committee, we just wanna hold in our committee as well for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Alchandey?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Item fifty-four, Counselor Mello.
Thank you, Mr. President. On January twenty-seventh, the Natural Resources Committee met and discussed the December twenty eighteen motion by Counselor Emre Shay and others to review and possibly amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter eighteen, Article two, notably Article eighteen dash sixty-two and Article eighteen dash sixty-five, a lateral sewer drain ownership and responsibility. And with a vote of two to zero, recommended removing this item from committee without action. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion, Counselor Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President. When we went to look at this deeper, what we found out is that in some places, there were situations where the city best not get involved unless absolutely necessary, and in other situations where the city policy differed from other communities, it was in favor of the residents, and so this might be a solution that didn't quite have a problem. And unless the rest of the councilors had an appetite to go forward with this, we saw no reason to take action.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the councilors? Seeing none, roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Alchandey?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Item fifty-five, Counselor Mello.
Thank you, Mr. President. On January twenty-seventh, the Natural Resources Committee met and discussed the changes to the Westfield Wetlands Protection Ordinance as requested by the Conservation Commission, and with a vote of two to zero, recommend first reading by title only. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, please.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Mello, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We were lucky enough to have the Conservation Commission Chair, Doe, and members Murphy and Grove with us in committee to answer Counselor and resident questions last week. This ordinance was last updated in nineteen ninety-three, which I was shocked to find out is twenty-nine years ago. The Conservation Commission and Law Department have worked on this ordinance for months and months to incorporate the needs and suggestions the commission has received from landowners, applicants, and land use agents. Changes include clarified purpose, updated definitions, and regulations updates that document the policy they have followed for more than seventeen years and was brought to their attention that had not been, you know, completely put into regulation. Like making the fifty-foot buffer zone a no-disturb zone for new construction work. This change also brings us more in alignment with Springfield, Wareham, and North Hampton. Oh, and the Law Department has been through it, completely vetted it, and I have spoken with Chair Figgy. So that's where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Figgy and then Ally.
Yes, I would like to commend the Conservation Commission, the Law Department, and Counselor Mello's committee. This is one of the most thorough jobs I've ever seen on an ordinance review, and as a result, they saw no need to bring it into LNO to delay it any longer. So congratulations for the good work everyone did.
Counselor Ally and then Bean.
And I'm gonna echo Counselor Figgy's comments. The Conservation Commission, they, they all did an amazing job. It's refreshing to read something that you can understand. Government doesn't always do a really good job with that, and they did a beautiful job. They worked very hard on it and very long on it. That Conservation Commission does a great job anyways, but they really did a great job with us.
Thank you. Counselor Bean?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something to Counselor Figgy. Are, are you saying, Counselor Figgy, that every committee chair should take note before moving stuff into, into LNO prior to any vote?
I'm s-
Counselor Figgy, of course.
What I'm saying, Counselor Bean, is yes, if it is a thorough, complete job, ordinance is already written, everything's been vetted. What I'm saying, Counselor Bean, is yes, if it is a thorough, complete job, ordinance is already written, everything's been vetted. There's, I don't see a need to bring it into LNO, uh, but it's on a case-by-case basis.
I, I think our council president was hoping for that last year as Chair of LNO as well, but.
Yeah, it was more eloquent.
We should start with a taproom. I think we should, if we get a taproom cleared.
All right, is there any further discussion, Counselor Morgan Alley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to uh, give uh, former Counselor Marian Babinski a. A shout out. She's a participant tonight, so she's listening in. I'm sure she's had. Lots to uh, play into this and uh, the late uh, Counselor Barbara Swords, I'm sure. Uh, is, would be very happy to see this uh, all completed. So thank you to all involved.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Mello.
I, thank you, Mr. President. I just know that if it's coming back to me for reading it by title only, I would just like to add that what they did not edit was the title. And so when it sounds really weird, that's not on me. I'm just saying.
Any further discussion? So the motion is uh, for uh, first reading by title only. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Bellchandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mellow?
Yes.
Morgan Alley?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Mello, is there a s- motion for second reading by title only at our, or at our next meeting?
Do we have to read it first?
Well, no, 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 I'm sorry. Would be a motion for second. No, that, that's okay. Uh, Counselor Figgy.
Yes.
Well, so moved, Mr. President.
Counselor Figgy?
Yeah, motion for second reading and final pass at our next meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Bellchandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mellow?
Yes.
Morgan Alley?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item fifty-six, Counselor Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to take items fifty-six and fifty-seven off the table. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, we had tabled these.
Hold on, go ahead, sorry.
So we had.
My mistake.
We had tabled these because um, it, we're, we're paying for salaries out of free cash. And we wanted to look at other funding mechanisms and do investigations and the investigation is complete and we are ready to discuss and vote on these.
Thank you. Uh, further discussion for taking this off the table? Okay, this will be a roll call to take the items off the table.
Bellchandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mellow?
Yes.
Morgan Alley?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. So uh. Counselor Matthews Kane, we'd like to speak of the item itself on fifty-six, please.
Yes, item fifty-six. I'd like to make a motion. To appropriate one thousand eight hundred ten dollars from free cash to the council on aging full-time salary account. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion, Counselor Matthews Kane.
Okay, so just to refresh on. Why these two positions are being discussed, um, the WMPA. Looked at a bunch of director's positions and felt like they had been um, misclassified and um, undercompensated. And they wanted to put the three of them on the same step and it was the DPW budget analyst. On the head of the Conservation Department and the head of the Council on Aging. And because they were on the step, all three of them have to be done simultaneously. We don't have to fund the DPW budget analysts because they had enough money available. Um. We looked into having the council on aging transferred from another council on aging account and. Every nickel is accounted for in that budget. So the only way to pay for it is to pay for it out of free cash. So that's why we'll be making the transfer.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Counselor Flaherty?
Yep, thank you. And I just want to compliment the two departments here. You can tell by these numbers, eighteen hundred ten dollars and twenty-eight ninety-seven. They're taking this right to the penny and you saw the last batch of things we. Voted a lot of stuff on is, you know, ten thousand here, a hundred thousand here, two hundred thousand for a truck, you know, very broad general numbers. But this use of free cash is extremely specific and um, the council on aging department should be commended. They do this on a regular basis. They only ask for what they need and they're right to the, right to the budget every year. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Bellchandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Oops, yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mellow?
Yes.
Morgan Alley?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item fifty-seven, again, uh, Counselor Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is regarding the appropriation of two thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars from free cash to Conservation Department full-time salary account. And make a motion to withdraw and take no action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, further discussion, Counselor Matthews Kane.
So this is one of the three positions where they want to raise the salary. However, we don't currently have somebody in that. Position, so we don't need to make the transfer. It will be funded in the future in the budget, but right now we don't have to transfer any money.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call. Uh, Counselor Figgy, did you raise your hand or?
No, thank you.
Roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Bellchandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mellow?
Yes.
Morgan Alley?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Item fifty-eight, Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you. Uh, motion of Counselors Flaherty and Mello requesting ZPD to review the Commonwealth's environmental justice requirements and propose revisions to Westfield ordinances to align where possible and reasonable with the state.
Sure, second. A motion made and seconded. Uh, discussion, Counselor Flaherty.
Yes, we always see the document from the Law Department about environmental justice neighborhoods. Counselor Mello is particularly concerned for these neighborhoods along with. Uh, counsel, but former counsel Babinski who's listening in. And they wanted to find out if there are ways that we can uh, affect the same outcomes by modifying Westfield's ordinances. Where possible and reasonable with the state and she convinced me, since I'm in ZPD, that I would be the right person to take this on. So. I volunteered to help her out. We'll see where it goes. Um. We don't know where it's going to go because we haven't looked at all the differences yet, but uh, there are. Um, quite a bit of differences between the local and state as far as notifications and treatment, treatment and outreach and all that kind of stuff. So we just want to get the ball rolling to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Bean, Mello, and Matthews Kane.
Yeah, uh, and I'm, I'm fine with this motion. I just, the word reasonable might. Be measured differently by people, so I'm really concerned about the word itself, especially in this body right now.
Thank you, Counselor Mello.
Is there another word we can use other than reasonable? And the what is the definition of is, can I ask that? No, just kidding.
Please, Counselor Mello, help us.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. We could delete the word reasonable and try possible and I'd still be okay with that if you like it. Um. I, I just want to say that forty-two percent, roughly rounding up forty-one point seven, forty-two percent of our population lives in environmental justice neighborhoods. That's, that's a lot of people in this town. That's a lot of people. That's like over seventeen thousand people. And um, the state recognizes. Rights that we are not necessarily protecting and. The information that we got from the Law Department mentioned that if, if we start standing in and protecting these things without codifying them, that we could open ourselves up. To liability, but if the state recognizes rights that we don't and we don't protect, we also open ourselves up. And so I don't know exactly where this will land, um, but I would like the opportunity to take a closer look at it and uh, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Matthews Kane.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I hope people will consider supporting this. I represent Ward Three. About big half of my ward is an environmental justice neighborhood. And it's simply an investigation. We don't know what we'll find, but you know, it could be simple things like off the top of my head, maybe we could do some more outreach. In other languages when we post public hearings. It could be some really simple things that we could do to protect people's rights. And I hope we can at least bring it into ZPD and look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion from any counselors? Okay, so this is a motion to move this into ZPD. Uh, roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Bellchandy?
You're on mute, John.
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mellow?
Yes, and thank you.
Morgan Alley?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, are there any announcements before we adjourn?
I'm tired.
You're tired. Um. Seeing none. Counselor Harris?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Seeing none. Roll call, please, Madam City Clerk.
Bellchandy?
Absolutely.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mellow?
Yes.
Morgan Alley?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
You're muted.
You're muted, Brent.
Yes.
You're slowing us down.
I am.
All right, good night, everybody. Thank you.